Roll call, Mr. DeAndrea.
Mr. Balka, here.
I'm Kevin Baradov.
I'm out of order, aren't I? Yes. Okay, let's try this again. Take notice, this public meeting at the Cerebral Board of Education was faxed to the Home News Tribune in accordance chapter 231 Public Law 1975. Further accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 and 10:4-21, a copy of this notice is posted outside the secretary's office and also filed with the clerk of the borough of Cerebral. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll do roll call.
Welcome to the June meeting. I'm not sure why everyone's sitting on the right-hand side, but we'll figure that out as we go. Mr. DeAndrea, roll call, please.
Mr. Balka.
Here.
Mrs. Bakow.
Here.
Mrs. Bloom.
Here.
Mr. Brazinski.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mr. Mackinon.
I am present.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
And Mr. Syak.
Here.
Okay, we have three presentations this evening. I'm going to start off with the first one. If I could call up Sanika Vani to the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, Sanika has served for the last year as our student council representative to the Board of Education, and as is tradition, we always present our student council representative with a plaque commemorating her year of service as our representative. So this is presented by the Cerebral Board of Education to Sanika Vani in grateful recognition of her dedication to the Board as Cerebral War Memorial High School Student Council Representative 2013-2014. Sanika, congratulations. Best of luck for your future. Congratulations.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for this plaque. It really does mean a lot. I have learned a lot from being the student council Board of Ed representative. It really taught me a lot about how to handle my responsibilities a lot better and how to speak in front of an audience a lot better, and thank you for this experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. For our next presentation, and this one actually came about under somewhat strange circumstances, I received an email from Mrs. Fasendo, and the email said, you know, "You and Mr. Mackinon have to make arrangements to sign the SEA contract." And I thought for a second, well, typically if you want me to sign something, you put it in a folder, and I sign it. So I thought, well, maybe I was missing a memo here. So I emailed Mrs. Fasendo, and I said, "Well, are we looking to do a photo op?" So Mrs. Fasendo then sent a note to Mr. Veers and said, "Would you like a photo op?" And our SEA president, Mr. Veers responded and said, "That's a phenomenal idea. I love a photo op. So now we're going to do a photo op of the signing of our SEA contract." So Mr. Veers, I'd like to invite you up. I'd like to invite up our chief negotiator, Mr. Mackinon, as well as a member of our negotiating committee, Mrs. Trapp. We got the whole crew here.
I said it's a photo op, but we got the camera.
I was told we had a camera. We now have a camera. Okay.
Well, we actually contacted the newspaper also.
Ah, got it, got it, got it. Okay. Just bear with us until we figure out where we need to sign. Here we go. I'll let you sign first. Joe, you want to get on the side, and we can take some photos? Can you get us some? Yeah, there we go.
You didn't like that, did you?
I think we're balanced this way. All right. Okay. Mr. Veers, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All set to go.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, for our third presentation of the evening, one of the things that we had scheduled a few months back was an update to the Board of Education by our assistant superintendent regarding the park assessment. Cerebral was chosen as one of the pilot districts to pilot the park, so we've had an opportunity to actually have our students get some experience with it, and this will also give us an update with regard to how we're doing in terms of not only implementing and preparing the students for the park examination, but also how we're working on aligning our curriculum and preparing our teachers for new expectations at the park has. So Mrs. Syakner, I will turn it over to you.
As Mr. Syak said, I just wanted to do a brief introduction to the park assessment. Everyone can organize more different things about the park assessment, so we'll order them.
Mrs. Syakner, I hate to do this to you, but could you use the microphone?
Do you want me to do this? Okay, sorry.
And I think if you want, you can pull it off and move, because I asked Mr. DeAndrea for enough rope to hang myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
There we go.
Okay, this is just a brief overview of the park assessment, and you will also have the opportunity, after I'm done with the PowerPoint presentation, to actually go online and see some of the sample items. You'll get to do that using some of our Google Chromebooks that I'm sure many of you have heard much about, that we were able to obtain 2,800, many of them through a grant. Okay, so the PARK stands for Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. Now, the PARK tests are taking the place of the HESPA and the New Jersey AS, the State Assessments. Okay? These tests, as you're going to see, are very different. They are given online, and the types of questions they are asking are also very different. There's a lot of critical thinking and problem solving. Another good point about these tests is that we will get more timely feedback. We will have the results of these tests, they tell us, before the end of the school year, as opposed to August and September, as we currently get the test results. Okay? One of the main purposes of the test is to determine whether the students are on track for college and career, hence the name, College and Career Readiness. There's a writing component at every grade level, and because not only schools in New Jersey are giving this test, but schools across the country are giving this test, and I'll show you in a moment, some of the other states that are doing it, they will also be able to make fair comparisons across the states. Okay? The tests right now are in English Language Arts Literacy and in Math. They begin in third grade, they go up through eighth grade in English Language Arts and Math. Then we have ninth grade, English Language Arts, 10th grade, and 11th grade. For the math portion at the high school level, we have Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. This graphic shows you the states that are involved in the park testing. The other states are involved in a different consortium with a very similar test, and it's called Smarter Balance. Okay, there's a number of different components to the PARK test. There are two diagnostic assessments, which are not required. Okay? These are given early in the year, and then the first one's early in the year, the second one is a mid-year assessment. Those are not required. At this point, we're not looking to give our students those extra assignments at this time. The required portions of the PARK are two different assessments. The performance-based assessment, which is given after about 75 percent of the school year has passed. Next year, it is scheduled to be given in March, and then the end-of-the-year assessment, when about 90 percent of the school year has passed. Next year, that is scheduled to be given beginning April 27 through the end of May. The scores will be combined for both of those to come up with one score for the child. Also, they're telling us that there will be a speaking and listening assessment, which will be required in English Language Arts, and that will be locally scored. We really have no other information on that at this point. This chart breaks down for you some of the different components in each part. In the English Language Arts, in the first assessment, the performance-based, there will be essays, and students will have to draw from multiple sources. They may have to watch a video. And the end-of-the-year in English Language Arts will concentrate on comprehension of literary and informational texts. Okay? In the Math, in the performance-based assessment, there'll be multi-step problems, and at the end-of-the-year test, they'll be, students will have to demonstrate understanding of concepts and applying that knowledge. Okay, this gives you a little bit of a timeline of what's gone on. Here in Sayerville, we were, as Mr. Syak said, all except one of our schools, were involved in the field testing. Actually, we are currently doing some field testing this week at the UES Eisenhower and Arleth this week. Last week, we did the high school and the middle school for the end-of-the-year assessment. For 2015, they expect the tests to all be fully operational. Okay? This, I know it's a little hard to see up here, I will have this available on the website, but this chart shows you the different grade levels and the different subject areas that were tested as field tests here in Sayerville. We had the high school level, we had Geometry and Algebra II, we had English Language Arts in Grade Nine. Okay, this just explains a little bit about going forward, what's going to be happening next year. As I said, we are not planning in Sayerville at this time to be doing the mid-year assessments, which that is optional, but we will be doing the performance-based assessment in March and the summative assessment in, basically in May. Okay, I have a list of resources here, which, as I said, I will have this available on the website. There's resources for parents, resources for teachers. Okay, now I think everyone in the audience has a Chromebook, and all the board members, along with directions on how to log on. Did you want one, Dave? You have one? Okay. So what we're going to do now is, I'm going to have you go on and actually see some of the sample items, because I think it's important for you to see what these look like with the different options that are available, with things like drag and drop, and the types of questions that are going to be asked here. Okay? So if you're having trouble getting on, let us know, one of the techs will come over. Okay, when you're on that page, if you...
On what page?
Yeah, just follow along with...
For the board members, you have to go to the HTTP address that was listed on the sheet.
Okay.
Type it in, though.
Oh, boy.
Go to Google Chrome.
I have a...
No, you can get in.
Oh, there she is. Okay.
Marilyn, you need more? I can maybe get you...
I'll try to go over there and help you. I don't think it'll do it. I'll yell.
Let me see what I can do.
Yeah, pass it to him. Oh, no, please. Okay.
Put it on the top. Okay, that says sample test.
Wait.
Marilyn, sample items or practice tests?
Sample items, I'm sorry. Sample items. Okay? And if you click on grade three to five ELA...
Whoa. What are you doing?
I need Marilyn some slack.
She gets enough slack from you. When we... What am I doing? I did this. Why do I always have to do, I have to do that auto type, open in a new tab up in the window?
All right, so I want to go here?
Uh...
I started the test, yes.
You don't listen.
I'm in the advanced class.
Maybe I'll read it.
Okay, if, is there anyone who's not on that yet, needs help getting there? Okay, if you're on grade three to five ELA, click on the blue box that says, "Start Test Now," and then "Start Section."
Kevin Chee. Thank you. Oh, I don't read. That's perfect. Thank you. Kevin Chee. It's perfect.
I'm in advanced.
Sample items. Grade three, five ELA. I didn't know where it was.
Okay, so you're on Start Test Now, Start Section, and if you take a look, if you're on one of 11, it's page one of 11, there are, there's a story in the box, and the student has to scroll down to read the story.
I must be reading, Andrew.
And if you notice the questions, the first question, "What is the meaning of the word 'master' as it is used in paragraphs five and six?" And the paragraphs are numbered for the students. The blue arrow up on top, on the top toward the left, will advance you to the next one. I'd like you to look at page two to get an idea of some of the things that the students have to do with drag and drop. Here again, this is the same story as on the first page, and the item asks the students to select three details from the story that help create the setting. Drag and drop the details into the box titled Setting. So you can practice, and you'll see how the students take and drag and drop those items. And that's how they will be answering these questions.
I don't think I can see the whole thing. Can you see? No, I have to keep scrolling down. They always are, John. I'm telling you. I see, I don't like to see that.
Now, Mrs. Syakner, as we're doing this...
Yes.
We can't see, like, the entire screen all in one shot.
No.
Is that by design?
That's how it...
He's going up and down.
Right, you have to keep scrolling, yes.
So does the student?
Yes, the student does too, absolutely. What you are seeing is what the students see, and this is why I wanted you to see this, to get...
But that, you know, if you're, if you're not an avid reader and you have difficulty reading, isn't that confusing scrolling up and down? And, I mean...
Even if you are an avid reader, it's confusing scrolling up and down.
It can be a little bit, and we are working, we are working with the students to try to get them accustomed to this. You know, this is a whole new type of literacy for the students. It's a whole new type of literacy for them, and this is why we wanted you to see this.
You can ask the same question, okay?
Yes, yes, you could. There are, which are not in these particular sample items I'm showing you, but there are videos that the students have to watch. They have that on some of the field tests. There are videos too, which I guess they could not do on paper and pencil.
I would...
Yes.
Could you get a mouse if you wanted?
Yeah, well, yes. We don't have any with us right here, but...
No, I mean me, I meant.
Yes, no, the students will, and that's an excellent point, the students have mice available. The students are given mice to use...
Well, that would make it easier.
Right, it makes it a lot easier to scroll it, absolutely.
Now, I know we made a decision to go with the Chromebooks for the park administration.
Yes.
If we had the access to a regular, you know, desktop PC with a larger screen, would that eliminate the scrolling effect?
No, there would still be scrolling.
It's still up and down.
There would still be...
You still wouldn't be able to see the whole passage.
Right, you're still not going to see the whole passage. Right.
If you had an iPad and you turned it this way, would it work?
I still, I don't, I still don't know if you could.
I bet you could.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay.
I just lost everything. This is that other one.
Okay, so as you can see, this is what in English Language Arts, this is grades three through five. If you go into the other sample items for grades six through eight and nine through 12, they're similar, certainly with higher levels of difficulty. But now what I'd like you to do is close out of that, just up on the top, close out, and it'll bring you back to the page that has the list of items. And let's go to a math section. Let's go through to grade six through, grade six through eight math.
I'm a reader.
Okay. Why don't we go to, go to grade six through eight math. Again, Start Test Now, Start Section, because on here, I want you to get an idea of what the math section looks like. Now, if you notice up on the top, top center, there are different tools. There's an eight-inch ruler, there's a protractor, there's a calculator, there's a scientific calculator. Now, if you click on any one of those, you'll see that you're able to, students are able to use those. But here, the students, they're using dropdown menus in the first question to complete an equation.
If you go to the second page on this, you'll see some other tools here that the students
can use. You see, there's icons. There's, you can click on numbers, and if you click on a number, the number will show up in the box. There's exponents and roots, relations.
Yeah.
What's the answer?
Okay, you want to know the answer? We don't have the answers for these.
I can't even know if I'm doing this right.
Right.
Do the budget next week.
Yes. Okay, I just had a question here. She wants to know what the difference is between these, this test and this test, the Smarter Balance, which the other states are doing. They're, as far as I know, they're pretty much the same. They're very similar. Okay? And you, if you're interested in seeing what the other tests look like, if you Google Smarter Balance, they also have available sample items and so on.
How many, how many of these Chromebooks do we have powered up to sign the testing?
We have a total of 2,800 Chromebooks in the district, and depending on how many students are testing at a time, I mean, we have, at the different schools, we have, you know, different numbers.
Do we have any infrastructure problem when they were all fired up?
No, we had, we did not have them all working at the same time, but we have not, during the field testing, I'm happy to report that we had absolutely no issues with our network, with our infrastructure. We had no problems with the technology. The students were very comfortable with using these. They, they didn't seem to have an issue with the scrolling, with the drag and drop, even the third-grade students.
That group is happening.
That, that group over here is happening wrong. Well...
And I, and I think, I mean, one of the, one of the questions on that piece is, while the students may not have issues with the technology, are they able to actually think with it and come up with the right answer? Because, I mean, I'm looking at some of these problems, and I can navigate the technology, but just myself being used to pen and paper, it's a lot easier to sit down with a pen and pencil and paper and write it out than it is to try to move drop block boxes to figure out what the right equation is.
Right, right. And we are going to be working with the students with the field testing. The field testing was done strictly to test the technology and the infrastructure. We were kind of looking over the children's shoulders to see how they were doing. They seem to be doing okay with it. They can use paper and pencil, like scratch paper, too.
Okay, all right, so that's helpful.
That's, we have not been told they cannot, so if they can use that, I mean, I know I was uncomfortable with a couple of those questions on the math, and I felt like I needed to write them down. Yes, and they can use paper and pencil, but then there's, they're going to have to remember to put the answer in.
Now, in terms of the interrelatability of the questions, I mean, there's multiple parts on these questions in the park. If you don't know the core concept for Part A, you're probably not going to be able to get Part B, C, and D. How is that all tying out with regard to the NJAS? Is that very different than the NJAS?
No, because the NJAS will have, like, let's say, for example, with a reading passage, they will have a number of questions related to the same reading passage, and, you know, question B may be somewhat related to question A.
Okay.
They still have that. In the PARK, there is more use of two different texts, and I don't know how much you got to see that on the sample I showed you, but I certainly urge you to go on and further explore these samples, and there are actual practice tests by grade level. What I showed you, for time's sake, were just a couple samples based on a band of grades, grades three to five. If you go onto the practice test, you can see the grade three Language Arts practice test, the grade four. And right now, they only have the practice tests for the performance-based by, hopefully within the next month, they will have the end-of-the-year samples also available, the practice test. So I urge people, we're going to be urging our teachers to really, you know, get on this and really look at it, because everyone has access to this, the access is unlimited, so students and teachers can go on as often as they would like to continually practice this.
And this will be posted on our website?
Yes, the presentation will be posted on the website, and this website is one of the resources that will be available there.
Now, this goes live for testing next year, next spring, correct?
Yes, yes.
Are we planning anything different from a, you know, either a professional development or a rollout phase in the fall of this year in order to ensure that that goes smoothly? And not so much from a technological standpoint, but in terms of student preparation for the test?
Student preparation or teacher preparation? Both, both.
They kind of go hand in hand.
Right, right. We are certainly working with, we've been working with the students, especially since we got the Chromebooks, and we have such access now to technology for the students. And with the teachers, we've been working with the teachers, we will have different professional development workshops for them, based strictly on the PARK, and there will be training provided on that. Yes, will certainly. And we want to continue to get the teachers to use the Chromebooks as often as possible. Many of our teachers have been in their PLCs this year designing online assessments, which is certainly a way to get the students used to taking tests this way, so...
Marilyn, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Does this test take longer to take than the previous test where they didn't use the Chromebooks?
Does it take longer to take?
Does it take longer to take?
Not sure yet.
Because it seems to me that I could have colored in those 48 boxes a lot faster if I just went like that, instead of clicking and moving and clicking and moving, and now it just seems more time-consuming.
Honestly, I'm not sure yet, really.
Do we offer feedback back in this test field?
Yes.
Like, the fact that we have to keep scrolling up and down to read the question, do we get to say that's a problem?
Yes, yes. Everyone who's been involved in the field testing, which, as I said, has been every school in the district except one, numerous teachers, and even in, Wilson School was the only school that was not selected for a field test, their teachers went over to other elementary schools to take part in the testing, so they would have an idea of what it was all about. And we've collected all of the feedback, and it is being provided from the teachers, the students, and the administrators.
Was that one of the issues, the scrolling? Do you remember?
I think it was, yes. Yeah. Does anyone else have any questions?
No, my problem is that I can't see the whole question. I have to keep going up and down.
I understand, but you understand if you scroll down and move with the other, slower, like... like...
John.
Yeah. I think it's less of a, I think it's less of a problem.
This has been a problem for me. She's the paper lady.
Okay. We just had a question. How do we monitor that a student does not just go on to Google and type in the question to try to find the answer? Great question. We, when we have teachers monitoring and proctoring the test, they're constantly up and walking around. I think as any teacher who's, who's here can attest to what you do during testing. And if I'm not mistaken, does it get blocked out? Right.
The TestNow app is a locked browser. Once it's open, you can't do anything else on it. It's done, you can't smooth. So you can't, you can't minimize it and everything else. Only way to ever get out of it is you have to finish the test. There's no way of getting out of TestNow unless you finish the test.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions, or, I hope you enjoyed using the Chromebooks?
This was certainly an experience.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And like I said, I urge you to go on and to continue to look at it as they update and give us more information. I'll certainly provide you with more information as we get it from, from the state.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Alphano, I believe that concludes our presentations, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There is no correspondence. Can I have a motion under approval of minutes to approve all of the minutes listed, with the exception of the May 12 minutes? Those will be discussed. There's a question on the executive session minutes, and we'll be discussing those at our next meeting. Can I have a motion?
So motion.
By Mrs. DePinto, or have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Walsh. Any comments on the remaining minutes? Hearing none, roll call Mr. DeAndrea, please.
Mr. Balka?
Yes.
Mrs. Bakko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, I have to abstain on the last meeting since I was not present.
Actually, you were in the room.
You probably should have stayed at all.
You were in the room. Thank you.
Mr. Brzezinski?
I'll be abstaining on May 20.
And yes, to the rest?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. McEnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mr. Seig?
Yes. Student Council Representatives' report.
The senior class currently just flew back from Florida for our Disney trip, which was a really great experience. I think it brought our class a lot closer together. We currently introduce the new executive members for the 2014-2015 school year with Tara Syak as the new Board of Ed representative. Adding on, the Activities Fair Friday will be a great for middle schoolers to meet the students and the diverse clubs in the high school.
Tara, what is your last name?
You heard that right, Mr. McEnon.
In, in the spirit of full disclosure, I have had four siblings go through the school system, and out of the four of them, only one has expressed an interest in being the Student Council Representative to the Board of Education. I did not encourage her, in fact, I discouraged her, but she was elected anyway. So my sister Tara Syak, who was the last one to go through the several public schools, will be serving as our Student Council Representative for 2014-2015. And she actually called me before she ran and asked if it would be a conflict of interest. I was impressed. Unfortunately, I couldn't lie to her. I had to say, no, it's not. So, welcome aboard, and Soneka, best of luck to you in your future as you, as you go forward. What college are you planning on attending?
Boston University.
Excellent, excellent. I visit Boston frequently. Okay, thank you very much for your report. Parent Involvement Representative Report. I know our Parent Involvement Council meeting was postponed or actually canceled. There's been no activity since then, correct? Okay, thank you.
Could you, why was it canceled? There was no reason given.
It was canceled because the board had a meeting that night, and we weren't going to have any board members there.
We didn't want to do it without.
We didn't want to do it without any board members, because we thought that was important.
Okay. Attorneys' report. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
No.
Oh.
Lucy could have been.
Lucy was available.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, gotcha.
You were on a boat.
Or was I? Okay.
This is a rare occasion that we have our attorney at our regular public meeting, but I think he's here pending an announcement later on, so...
Yeah, in view of the fact that I didn't know I was attending this meeting until about 25 minutes ago, I'm honored to be here, but I have no report.
We know how you like surprises.
Good job, good job, no report.
We'll move on to our district highlights, Mrs. DePinto.
He's not billing us, no.
Congratulations to Marie Malara, music teacher at the Sayoville Middle School, who was awarded the 2014 New Jersey Master Music Teacher Award at the New Jersey Music Educators' Association State Conference on February 21, 2014. Marie was nominated for this prestigious award by fellow music educators and observed teaching by a committee of five distinguished educators. Mrs. Malara also received the Governor's Award for Arts Education on May 1, 2014, at a ceremony held in the Patriots Theater at the War Memorial in China. A job well done to the Sayoville War Memorial High School Stand Up to Cancer Club for raising over $11,000 for the St. Baldrick's Childhood Cancer Research Foundation at the annual Powderpuff Football Game played on May 22, 2014. Congratulations to all for their support of this wonderful cause. This year, our beloved state is celebrating its 350th birthday. The New Jersey Social Studies Supervisors Association sponsored an endeavor for teachers from the SUES, Betty Clark, Kathy Stricker, and Lori Stapleton. They decided to get together and accept this challenge. They decided to create lessons based upon New Jersey lighthouses. After a tedious amount of hours, they submitted the lessons. The NJSSSA decided that these lessons should be included in their presentation on classroom lessons about New Jersey. These will be available on the NJ350 and the NJCSS websites for teachers to use for years beyond the anniversary in 2014. Congratulations to Mrs. Clark, Ms. Stapleton, and Ms. Stricker.
Thank you, Mrs. DePinto. And we'll move on now to the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Syak. First section is buildings and grounds, approval of the use of the high school parking lot for the band parents to hold their annual call wash on June 21st. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to B, finance. Renewal of the George Coateen Associates Energy Audit Services as listed, approval of renewal of an E-Rate consultant, and approval of renewal of the Heartland School Solutions on Online Payment Management Services, which is in the cafeteria. We also will be approving the solicitation of, award of a contractor or vendor who will audit the board telephone bills in an attempt to secure refunds and/or credits. Mr. Bishada would be real happy about that.
Yes, he would.
Bringing back Mr. Bishada. Number five, approval of the contract of DI Group to, in the amount of $11,500, to do an assessment of the Slover School and moving it to a K3 school. Same architectural firm, again, to do the district long-range facility plan. Approve the purchase of a 24-passenger bus and a 54-passenger bus, as noted in 78. Approve the amendment to professional service to contract a speech-language services amendment from $44,000 and change to $50,000. Approve the amendment for professional services and a change for the orientation of mobility specialist services from $20,000 to $35,000. And to approve the agreement participation between transportation services and Union County Educational Services Commission and the Middlesex Regional Services Commission in 11 and 12. Any questions with that section?
Question? The, the three contracts are for two years, why are they for two years, not for one?
They're, they're allowable for one one-year or one-two-year. So I'm looking to just bring them on, because they've, they've done work with us already over the years.
So what's the benefit of doing two over one? Is there a benefit?
Just instead of coming back to the board on a yearly basis, they're allowable to do a two-year contract, so I'm asking to do it.
And another question, the architect's contract, it mentioned in there that they were not going to look for anything hazardous, I guess like asbestos.
Right.
Are we going to hire another firm to do that?
We already have Management International who has, who does all our asbestos awareness and things of that nature, and will, will adhere to whatever reports they have.
So that they'll come in to look at Slover?
No, they already have their reports, and they know where they are.
So we've done an asbestos?
Yes, we have that, we do.
Do we have any asbestos problems in Slover?
Not that I'm aware of, but don't hold me to that.
But there could be once they start breaking rules and digging floors.
Yes.
Dr. Alphano, I'm just going to ask you, on the even-numbered pages, to please read slowly, because I believe that the public, or at least some members of the public, only have the odd-numbered pages copied, that it wasn't double-sided out there. So just so the public can...
You want me to read double fast, then?
Here are the items. On the even-numbered pages, just slow down.
I got it.
And I apologize to the public, that normally, that normally doesn't happen.
Kevin?
Yeah.
If I could, for clarification, on the, the facility assessment of Slover?
Yep.
I spoke to Rich Aldericio. Hopefully, the, the report will come back, or at least when coming back, listing the main priorities. Those are the things that we should be done, and maybe those that are more cosmetic, so that you get a sense moving forward with the renovations of Slover. Those that are first and foremost, those are second tier and third tier.
And for the benefit of the public, this whole proposal and discussion centers around the reopening of the Slover School as an elementary school, starting in September of 2015. So this is the architectural side of this, in order to make sure that we have things in, in place. This is under the guise of the Finance and Infrastructure Committee, led by Mr. Balka. So their committee has reviewed the proposal and is recommending it to the board.
I'm going to be voting no on number one and number three.
That's not the proposal, is it?
No.
Okay, good.
Number one, Coateen.
So finance, B1 and B3?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, moving to C, personnel non-certified. We have a retirement, a few unpaid medical leaves, and a personal leave. Unpaid, a paid suspension of an employee until further notice, that's in four and five. And there's an addition, there's 5A, and I will read it. The Board of Education is requested to approve an unpaid suspension of the individual in number five, who is a bus driver, from June 4th, pending further action of the board. Again, that's, the Board of Education is requested to approve an unpaid suspension of the individual in number five, who is a bus driver, for the period effective June 4th, 2014, pending further action of the board. Number six is an amendment to a previous salary contract. And number seven is an approval retroactively of all the non-certificated individuals for the 2013-14 school year, which is noted in Attachment A. Since we're on an even page, I'll read more slowly. Approve the employment of the following non-certified staff, and those are all the non-certified, non-union staff, as listed. And number nine, approve the employment of the following two paraprofessionals. Number 10, which is on page seven, is approval of the substitute list on pages seven and eight. Any questions with that section? With none?
Dr. Alphano, if I could just...
Yes, sir.
...both the certified and non-certified staff. We will make every effort in my office to get these retroactive checks processed before the end of the school year. Just understand, it's processing over 700 personnel, and we do not have the list yet for your coaches and advisors, so they may be delayed.
Where, where are we in that process?
Considering the list, the list was just sent to my office last week.
Where did the list come from?
Personnel office or the superintendent's office. So I am going to start the process, I've already started the process of calculating the retro checks and the calculation of the amounts that are due to all the individuals.
Who does that?
One person. The payroll person does all the processing, so she has to process three separate payrolls for the month of June, the 15th, the 24th, the 30th, and also try and get in this retro within before the end of the year. So we will do our best to try and get it done.
Will we provide necessary overtime if that's required?
Yes, but the unfortunate part, it's one person who has the ability to access the payroll system, so overtime starts to burn someone out after a point in time. So we will make every effort.
I'd like to get updated on that. Next meeting, what we're doing.
Yes, certainly will.
Thank you. Moving to D, certified. There's a retirement of a nurse.
Dr. Alphano, one, Mrs. Bakko has a question on the last section.
I don't have a question.
Oh.
Number eight, I'll be voting no. Yes, Wayne Kornowski and down, yes, and above, no.
I apologize.
Number eight, page six.
Okay.
If you split it in the middle, Wayne Kornowski and down.
So for the benefit of the public, since this is an even page, Mrs. Bakko is voting yes on Wayne Kornowski, Bruce Marschenchek, Isabel Hospador, Deborah Cooper, Kathleen Iannacomo, Marie Probl, and Angela Jones.
Right.
And then she's voting no on Cameron Rynowitz, Sherry Camprowski, Dennis Pantoliano, Deborah Shadlock, Michelle Jenkins, and Sandra Hawke.
And Cameron Rynowitz.
Yes, I indicated that. Are you voting no to rehire or voting no on the salary?
I'm voting no.
I know that.
On the salary, well...
It's no choice.
I don't have a choice, it's, I can't support.
So it's a no vote?
It has to be a no vote.
Yeah, there is no separation between the two.
Can I inquire?
Can you inquire?
Why, why? I, I think the question is, is it an issue of, if it was separated, it's a salary increment. Salary. Okay, that's what I was asking.
I'm going to abstain on, I'm going to abstain on Wayne Kornowski, vote yes on the confidential secretaries and no on the others. It's also salary.
So you'll also be voting no on the train officer as well?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Got that, Mr. DeAndrea?
I got it, doc.
Thank you. Personnel, certified. There's a retirement, a resignation, child rearing, pregnancy leave. Again, this is a even number, so I'll go slow. Approval of a retroactive salary for the SA in Attachment A, these are all the certified people, and that was, there was an attachment, which was on the, one of the chairs over here. Approved the transfer of Cecilia Russo from a non-tenure track to a tenure-track position. Some contractual retirements on number seven. Salary adjustments, as noted, for the 14-15 school year, a few professional days, an amendment to a salary where we had a mistake on longevity, and the new substitute list, which is number 11. Any questions with that? You okay, Mr. DeAndrea?
Lucy has to abstain on.
Yeah, I have to abstain on, is that five or is that seven?
Number five for you.
Number five, yeah.
Number five for her son.
Got it. E, policy, no report. This is number 10, so I'm going to go slow. HIBs, none. Special services, various placements and services, as noted on page 10. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to G, co-curriculum. There's the red carpet premiere that is on June 18th at the Truman School. Retroactively, at the SUES, PTO, was the drama club movie at the Bandstand. Approval of education-first tours that runs through the high school, as noted in number three. Any questions with that section?
Dr. Alphano, just on number three, did we approve the actual trip that coincides with that, or is that forthcoming?
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
But we do, eventually do approve it if we go.
And that's my only question, because I know this is during the summer, I just want to, if we're, if EF is coming in and hosting the meeting here, then that means that we're going to assume liability for the trip, because it's being done through the school?
You know, I'm not sure if this is done completely separate from the Board of Education. I don't recall actually approving these trips.
No, I think last time, I don't think we approved.
It's a separate, they just come in and, I guess, just solicit, and we had discussion about whether or not we...
Okay.
But we do, eventually do approve it if we go.
And that's my only question, 'cause I know this is during the summer, I just wanna, if we're, if EF is coming in and hosting the meeting here, then that means that we're going to assume liability for the trip because it's being done through the school?
You know, I'm not sure if this is done completely separate from the Board of Education. I don't recall actually approving these trips.
No, I think last time, I don't think we approved it.
It's a separate, they just come in and, I guess, just solicit, and we had discussion about whether or not we even wanted them to come in the last time. And it was, you know, basically stated that we were gonna allow them to keep going because it was a benefit to the children.
Yeah, and I'm actually familiar with EF tours from my work with national school boards, but I attended one of their seminars, and they actually even recommend to boards to, you know, be very careful about, if you have them in, are you creating a nexus and creating basically the appearance that it is a school-sponsored event? And the liability is then borne by us. So we just need some clarity around that going forward in terms of who's exactly liable, and if it truly is, has nothing to do with us going forward and they're just coming in, we just need to make sure that whatever forms are passed out, clearly state that.
I don't think it is, we do anything with that.
Okay.
You know my position with trips, so I'll...
Yeah, this is true.
When people go, when people go on planes.
Yeah.
So I'll just leave it at that. The young ladies are not here anymore, so you know what my feelings are when, about Florida trips and...
Yes.
Trips to wherever.
You love them.
But I love them, I do, I do, really do. But I'm just a little leery.
But our seniors are back staying in town, so you could rest easy tonight.
Thank God, believe me, I said a prayer every night. Any questions, any other questions with that section? With none. H, Support Services. There's some waiving of transportation, some contractual transportation contracts, and five trips. I will now turn my consent agenda over to my illustrious attorney to read an additional resolution. Aren't you gonna read the resolution, or is...
No, we're gonna make, it's gonna be a separate piece.
A separate piece.
Completely separate from my report.
Completely separate, yes.
That concludes my report then.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we have the superintendent's report concluded. Do any board members have any questions?
I just have one more question. Mr. Byrne, how are we doing with substitute paraprofessionals?
It's an interesting experience, Mrs. Backo.
Well, I noticed there was only one tonight, so...
Right. We've worked with Mrs. Fasendo's office in terms of trying to get qualified people to come. I personally have interviewed many people. I know there's been a certain hang-up in regard to fingerprinting lately, in regard to qualified personnel. I would share with you that the people that I've interviewed have very distinct opinions about working in certain locations, and so that does limit the pool in terms of the availability of our paras when we do call them, because we have, do have a great need for the preschool program, and unfortunately, I don't know why, but many people do not seem so inclined to want to come to spend time with us at the preschool.
Are you saying you're having trouble getting substitutes?
Or having trouble fingerprinting substitutes?
Okay, because I know several people that have contacted me that have asked why they, when they have called the district office to say, can they please come and fill out substitute papers, whether it be substitute teaching, substitute paring, anything, they've been told, I'm sorry, we're not accepting any more applications for the year.
Currently, in most of the other areas, we are overloaded. In terms of substitute paraprofessionals, we have a backup with the state fingerprinting agency, SAG-AMORFO. They are way backlog, so if people come to us without fingerprints, we're having a terrible time getting them fingerprinted before the end of this school year. That's really what the issue has been.
But we're not accepting any other substitute applications for...
We will be as of July 1st, but at this point in June, that's, it's a bit late.
Wait for next year.
Right.
Any other questions on the superintendent's report? Hearing none, I'll open it up to public participation on the superintendent's report only. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, we'll close public at this time. I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's report. By Mrs. DePinto, do I have a second? By Mrs. Strapp. Any remarks? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. DeAndrea.
Mr. Balka?
Yes, except I was noted.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, except we're noted.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. McEnon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes. I will waive my report as delegate to NJASBA in light of the... Light of the pending announcement. I'm glad you all look forward to it, it'll be twice the length next month.
In two weeks. How about July?
Be a nice retirement gift for you, Dr. Alfano.
You can have it five times as long as July.
Any committee reports? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, I would just like to read to the public reflection from Dr. Larry Feinsaat, who was the executive director of New Jersey School Boards, on the National Report Card. The latest results of the National Assessment of Education Progress, also known as the Nation's Report Card, once again show that New Jersey public school students rank among the nation's best in mathematics and reading. Since 2009. That's good news to hear as the 13-14 school year comes to a close, and it is a credit to the hard work of New Jersey students and the members of the education community. Yay us.
Thank you, Mrs. Bloom.
Yeah, I'd like to send something else to the governor, but I'd get arrested.
Any other committee reports? Okay. We have a special present.
Drum roll, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we've been embarking on a superintendent search, and it's actually been a very aggressive process. And before we get into the actual person that we'll be appointing, I do want to issue a few notes of thanks. First, to the Board of Education, working with this group has been fantastic. We set out a goal in the beginning with Dr. Alfano's announcement on or about February 28th. We were in the field when they had on March 10th. Applications were due back April 10th, and we basically had a finalist identified by roughly May 19th, and two weeks later, we've got a contract and we're here to appoint. And when you think about the time it takes to appoint a superintendent, that is really an aggressive timeline and a great credit to the board and the members of the board that I work with. What also helped us was the fact that this district is well-run, and when we went out for a superintendent, people applied here, people wanted to come here. So we had 49 applicants who were interested in the position. We narrowed that down to 11 and interviewed from there going forward. So with a strong candidate pool, that helped make our job a little bit easier. I really want to thank Mr. DeAndrea for all of his help as business administrator. We did have some internal candidates in the district, and I can say that he was not one of them, which is one of the first questions that I asked him, and he was able to work with me directly in helping to try to facilitate this process. And to all of you that may have gone to him with information, I can testify under oath that he did not know the names of any of the individuals who were involved, other than they were candidates number one through 11. So when he told you he didn't know, he really didn't know. I'd also like to thank Gwen Thornton from the New Jersey School Boards Association, and also our new executive county superintendent. We didn't think we would actually be here today, 'cause we thought we would have it held up at the county office. Our new county superintendent just came in, and she was absolutely phenomenal. I see her as someone who is going to remove bureaucracy and remove roadblocks and really help local boards, and I'm really excited about that, about that prospect. We have selected an outstanding individual as our next superintendent of schools, and he's here tonight. His name is Dr. Richard Labby. He is currently the superintendent in Green Brook Township. And some of the things that really attracted us to Dr. Labby were, first of all, he actually is coming home, because his initial start was here in Serval in 1990 as a substitute teacher, a student teacher, and also as a assistant football and wrestling coach. So his actually first home, in terms of education, was here. From there, he actually had an opportunity to take a permanent position in Edison. He served as a teacher for seven years. Part of that time was worked as a transition coordinator for the Edison Public Schools with an extensive focus on special education and school-to-work transition. On top of that, after he completed seven years of teaching, he moved into administration. He served as an assistant principal and a principal, both at the elementary and the secondary level. So he had both elementary and secondary experience from an administrative perspective. From there, he used his education, his master's degree in special education, and moved into a director of special education position for the Jackson Township Public Schools. And he worked very closely in special education. That's one of his passions and one of his, one of his important focuses. From there, he got a position with the Green Brook Township Board of Education as their superintendent, and also as their director of special education. So he's actually been doing two roles. Beyond that piece, beyond the experience that he has, beyond the education that he has and the background that he brings to us, what really attracted the Board of Education to him when we interviewed with him are basically his passion for public education. I know one of the concerns that people had was, would we bring someone in who was looking at public education alternatives? This individual is an advocate for public education. Beyond being an advocate for public education, he's an advocate for children, and he's an advocate for students. That is his first priority in terms of decisions that he makes. He told us, that's the first group that he looks at, how does this affect our students? In addition to that, as we interviewed with him, we saw someone who had a lot of passion, a lot of energy, a lot of desire for an appropriate and well-thought-out change, and we were also very impressed that he was an excellent spokesperson for the district. This is someone that can go out, motivate staff, engage staff, and also go out and talk to the community about the success that the Serval Public Schools are having, and really basically promote our successes around here. So tonight, we're taking action to basically lay the cornerstone for Vision 2030 in the appointment of Dr. Richard Labby. So I'd like to invite him up to say a few words, and then I will go over some of the specific terms of his contract, so that the public is informed specifically with regard to disclosure on that, and then we'll open it up to public, and the board will have an opportunity to appoint. Dr. Labby, welcome to the Serval Public Schools.
I thank you very, very much. Believe me, there will come a day where you do not want this in my hand. But it's a thrill and honor and a distinct privilege to be here tonight with you, and especially to be appointed as the next superintendent in such, in a district that is so special and meaningful to myself and my wife, who is here with me today. First, my compliments to Dr. Alfano, Board of Education members, your administration, your faculty, your staff, and of course, your parents and your students for having such a well-run and successful school district. It truly is going to be an honor to serve you. You know, my wife and I have kind of lived by a philosophy that, you know, in order to go through those good times and those bad times that, you know, life inevitably brings upon you, you have to look at things as, you know, there was a purpose for them. So in some of those good times that my wife and I have had, that philosophy has helped us stay humble. And through some of the more challenging times, that philosophy has helped us remain faithful. And as I was driving into the complex, not the first time, because I came back several times when I interviewed, but as my wife and I drove in, it brought back so many incredible memories of a school district that inspired me to become the educator that I am today. A school district that gave me an opportunity to go into a classroom and work with children, an opportunity to find my calling, to find my passion. And it was also a school district that during one of the most difficult times in our lives, we were a part of that Durham Woods explosion back in 1993. And it was a school district that affirmed our faith in humanity. When the community came out and they literally held us up, and they told us to be strong, and they helped us move forward through a very, very painful period. And at that point, as we were moving into this complex, I recognized my purpose. The purpose for me coming to Serval is to give back to this wonderful community that has given so much to myself and my wife. And I am greatly looking forward to the opportunity to serve you, beginning July 1st, and to collaboratively lead you into Vision 2030. So thank you once again, and I truly am looking forward to working with each and every one of you on July 1st.
Thank you, Dr. Labby. Just to review with the members of the public some of the terms of his contract, he will be paid at the superintendent's salary cap set forth by the state for the borough of Serval, which is $167,500. That is the 165 flat plus the 2,500 additional for a district which has a high school. So that is in accordance with the law. In addition to that, he'll be subject to 15% incentive compensation, again, also in accordance with the law. That'll be based upon both qualitative goals, which are more, you know, school climate-related, as well as specific quantitative goals, which are more student achievement and specifically, numerically, performance-related. All of those goals are subject to approval by the Board of Education, as well as the executive county superintendent of schools. And then the result before the actual incentive compensation is paid is also required to be approved by the Board of Education, as well as the executive county superintendent of schools. The standard provisions are in there for cell phone, cellular, tablet, laptop, computer, and printer. He will receive a travel reimbursement equal to the standard IRS mileage rate based upon the number of miles which are driven, whether it be within district or to any type of conferences or meetings. Home-to-work is excluded, work-to-home is excluded. And in addition to that, there is a disability policy for insurance, which the board will pay for up to $2,500 in the event Dr. Labby is for any reason disabled. The insurance policy will provide for income for his family. I believe that that covers the major provisions. Did I miss anything? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, what I will do is I will open it up, oh, actually, I should read the actual resolution that the board will be adopting this evening, which is back at my seat. So as soon as I get back there, I will read it, and then we'll open it up to public. The resolution which the board will be adopting this evening states, whereas Dr. Frank Alfano, superintendent of schools for the Serval Public School District, is retiring from the district effective June 30th, 2014, and whereas the Serval Board of Education has engaged in a comprehensive search for a new superintendent of schools, and whereas the board, having reviewed numerous resumes and interviewed several candidates, is interested in appointing Dr. Richard R. Labby as superintendent of schools, effective July 1, 2014, and whereas the board and Dr. Labby have negotiated the terms of an employment contract, and whereas the executive county superintendent has reviewed and given initial approval of the superintendent's employment contract pursuant to NJAC 6A:23A-3.1, now therefore be it resolved that the Serval Board of Education hereby approves the employment contract of Dr. Richard R. Labby as superintendent of schools for a period of July 1, 2014 through June 30th, 2017, subject to formal approval of the executive county superintendent. With that, do any board members have any comments or questions?
I have a question, Mr. Syak. If this is the cap set forth by the county, what happens when the contract runs out?
What happens...
Will we lose Dr. Labby?
That would be up to the board at that time, Dr. Labby at that time, and also with regard to whether or not the caps are still in place and what they are. What I can tell you is that Dr. Labby indicated that he is interested in making a long-term commitment to Serval.
Yeah.
Because the board did ask that question.
The cap has a sunset clause.
The cap does also have a sunset clause, and like I said, we don't know whether it's going to sunset or not. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will open it up to public. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If you wish not to be photographed, please let us know. No, on the superintendent's contract, I'll open it up one more time at the end. Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve a contract appointing Dr. Richard R. Labby.
I will make that motion to appoint our new superintendent, Dr. Labby.
I have a motion by Mr. McEnon, do I have a second? I have a second by Mrs. DePinto. Any remarks or conversation? Please be advised for the record that Mrs. Bloom, because of a conflict with a relative that works in the district, may not approve the contract and must abstain. Doctor, Doctor DeAndrea, can I roll call, please?
That's a first.
Too many doctors.
Doctor moan.
I have to deal with this for the next 24 days or so.
You and me both.
It's a regular basis, though, here. Mr. Balka?
Yes.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
I have to abstain.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. McEnon?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes, with great enthusiasm.
Mr. Syak?
Yes. Congratulations, Dr. Labby. And we know how much superintendent's... And we know how much superintendents like surprises at public meetings, so I just wanted to give you your first surprise from Serval. We have procured a cake which reads, "Congratulations, Dr. Labby." So as soon as we're done with this meeting, which will hopefully be in about 30 seconds, Mr. DeAndrea will bring that out. You can cut your cake, and you can eat it, too. Anyone else for the board have any other items to discuss? Hearing none, I'll open it up to the public for one final time for any comments or concerns concerning the district. Hearing none, I'll close public, and I'll take a motion to adjourn in the FCA.
So move, so move.
By Mr. McEnon, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mrs. Bloom. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?